And one of the questions that I have also is, I think it needs to be a little more brought up to us, what our responsibility as, our fiduciary responsibility. And which draws, segues and weaves us into another comment that the chairman's gonna bring up. But, we need to know those.
And then there's trainings out there, you know, and-
It's your responsibility to train us.
Yeah, and there's trainings out there that the state has offered to come in and train boards and stuff for that, for that reason.
So, my suggestion to you is you ask that you be put on the agenda and give us an afternoon workshop.
I would love to do that.
We would love it.
And if there's more information and you want me to get deeper into that, I'm more than willing to do that. I was afraid that you're gonna wanna know the details of, like, the reunification plan, and I can't give those out because the reunification plan, that's something that, that could, that could be pretty tricky about.
Well, I apologize if that was given that way, 'cause I think I kinda said just a general, all the compliance.
Yeah, it's, it's really tricky on the safety and stuff, but, you know, the public can know, needs to know we have plans, they just don't need to know what's in them.
Well, and my purpose was not to disseminate the plans, it was just to have an overview of what was going on.
Okay, okay. Moving on, debris management plan, give us an overview of what we're doing there.
So, debris management, we have a tornado that comes through, so, we have a lot of debris down trees, stuff like that, we gotta, we gotta know what we're gonna do with it, whether it's in the county or in the city. So, I had to have a debris management plan from the county of Upton, the city of Newcastle, and the county. So, we gotta know where to, where to take all that stuff, we have places to put it, and places to go to pick it up and where to take it. So, the only thing that changed in that plan was changing it from the county landfill to the Solway district, and that's where it's all gonna go. Unless it's, unless it's something they can't take, and then-
That would be usual.
Well, I would take out the West County engineer, we don't have one.
Yeah.
We don't have a West County engineer. You probably could put that just around the grid.
Emergency evacuation, I guess you'd give the general overview.
So, that's gives the major thoroughways of the highways and stuff like that, and just an overview of how people should evacuate, how we're gonna notify people, how we're gonna evacuate.
Well, I got, I have a question on this one, where it says ensure that official evacuation order is signed by the elected official. Is this necessary, which, I don't know that that is, but at some juncture, you may need to spend funding on something, so-
Possibly, so, in the past, they used to say that you cannot force people to evacuate, but there has been litigation, and there are state statutes that say that you can't, and that the county commissioners can say that, and you can sign off as the chairman, that you can order an evacuation. So, that, that is something that changed in that this year. And I believe I put all those state statutes in the plan.
And they can be arrested if they hurt-
There is state statutes for the agents saying that if they don't. Now, will the sheriff-
Yeah.
He, I don't know if he would do that because I, and I would also, I mean-
Are you gonna waste your time dealing with one joke that's not believable?
Yeah, and then people wanna stay in, like, in a wildfire, wanna stay and try to save their home, then, you know, have at it, you know? But, there has been litigation and people, you know?
So, if I sign this, are we, are we initiating that directive?
I would say so, and it gives you the authority to order an evacuation.
Which, yeah, I think that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question on that, I guess, I think Marty's got something.
Which it gives, it gives it a little more backbone to, to us, and to Daniel, and to the sheriff, anybody else, saying, "Hey, you know, we need to evacuate this, you know, they can come to you guys and say, hey, we're gonna order this, now, you know, how far we take it is, you know?" But you're doing your due diligence, saying, "Hey, we ordered this evacuation, and they didn't follow it, it's on them."
So, train derailment of sulfuric acid in the center of Upton or Newcastle, whatever. But, at that point, is it your responsibility to come to the chair?
I would come to you and say, "Hey, will you order this evacuation?"
And it would be your recommendation of how far and why?
Yeah, initially, we would be ordering evacuations, the incident commander or whoever would be ordering evacuations, but to continue that, with, you know, for a longer amount of time and to make that official, I think it would probably come to you. But, like, initial safety, it would, it would happen immediately. That's just another, another option is having the county commissioners.
Which maybe would be best if you, I don't know, how you, I suppose you, put your trust in whoever's chair, I guess, of the board, or, I mean, you call it a special meeting would be potentially life threatening, maybe, if you're-
Yeah, so, like, if we, if we had to change derailment right now, they would automatically just start, you know, depending on the wind and all that, you know, as Ed knows, he's a former fire chief, you would need to order evacuations right now, without having to come to the commissioners. But, on a different situation, they may have to come to the commissioners and ask for evacuations.
So, this'll probably be updated then, for that, 'cause you just have it right on?
Yes.
And next August?
Okay.
I mean, that's not big, but. And, Mr. Chairman, so I go back, I, I'm gonna go back to the webpage thing, because you talked about, and I would assume Facebook, X, whatever, whatever they're called now, I don't know.
Yeah, I only use Facebook.
Okay, Facebook, well, there's a link there. So, if somebody got to that place and tried to link up, it doesn't work. So, I, I'm gonna go back, that maybe that's a valid place to update. We're paying for it, we're paying for that space, you might as well update that site. Because if, if they get frustrated with that, and they can hit that Facebook link, and you've updated it, well, that's probably advantageous, I'll go back on that one too.
Okay.
Even though I was kinda flipping about, just get rid of it, but I don't think it should be.
So, it says in that evacuation protocol that no law enforcement officer, public safety official has the legal right to oppose that mandatory evacuation, does that need to be changed?
Yeah.
They don't unless there's an incident commander and it's an immediate life safety. So, if they're first on scene and they know, I mean, it's, it's gonna be the incident commander, unless it's immediate life safety, then they can get away with it. But, other than that, they don't, they can't just walk up and say, "You need to evacuate", they have to come from, like, a fire chief, or emergency management, county commissioners, sheriff, police chief, someone like that.
I have one here that I wrote, and it goes back to the debris management. So, you have a continuing, I can't say the word, of government.
Continuing operation.
Of governments, yes. So, it says, "West County's policy, relocation, safeguard of vital records, and schedule of records, retention of this, yep, I can't say that word either, deposition, December of 2007." Do any of us know where that's at? Have any of us read that?
So, the continuing operations plan?
Yeah, have we updated it?
I update it every two years.
So, what does it say, 2007?
It's something like this, so it gets updated every two years, the continuing operations plan gets updated every two years.
Would it, but, be okay if we saw that even if it was in executive session?
The continuous operations plan, absolutely, I mean, it gets updated and signed every two years.
Well, I'm starting to ask why you don't get to see it, that's all I ask.
It comes before you every two years, for signature.
So, I'm asking.
Yeah, it'll be getting this, so I'll start on it again for update this, this spring, probably.
Cool.
So, I mean, we can work on it together.
That'd be awesome. I have one more question. So, a lot of this, once again, I'll go back, 'cause that's the number one job that we have is fiduciary. So, what happens when there's government shutdown?
Well, getting funds could be an issue.
So, I'm struggling with that?
Yeah.
So, where are the funds gonna come from?
Well, if we have a disaster right now, that's a good question.
Thank you. Pay for this.
That's good.
Thank you.
So, you, you're all aware how the disaster, how that works, you know, we have to declare disaster and has to reach a certain amount of money and all that, and then we get reimbursed, or hopefully by the feds.
With, with all due respect-
So, with the government shutdown-
Let me interrupt you.
Okay, go ahead.
With all due respect, there may be those that don't know that system, so that'd be appropriate, another one of those workshop things, to educate those who may not know how that system works. That'd be a good idea.
Absolutely.
Awesome idea. But, I'm sorry, interrupt you.
Yeah, so, with the government shutdown, I would hope that they would still fund that, because that's critical life safety, so. Grants, on the other hand, the portal is shut down, for the, for the thing to shut down, all my grants are in, I submitted nine grants this year. So, the generator being one, for the courthouse, $85,000. So, but I submitted nine grants, but the portal shut down, so, so, hopefully that, that shutdown will end, and grants will be awarded, so, but-
So, the $70,000 in red, is that because you've been on that?
So, that's old money that they should, they should have, so I just did $8,900, did a voucher report this morning, still waiting on, you should be getting reimbursed on some of that stuff that should be coming, 'cause I just did some last month.
So, it's just a matter of you're waiting on that?
Waiting on them to reimburse, that's always the holdup.
So, how could we help in that? Because I went and looked this morning and had her bring the book, and one of those is a year and a half old.
Uh, I need to know which one that wouldn't-
She can bring it in, Suzie, are you listening to me? See, did I hear you? Will you bring that grant book, please, look at her tone?
I have no idea what would be a year and a half.
Yes, I was listening to you.
Will you show that one that's February of '24?
To get one?
All right.
How are ya?
Oh, damn it.
Fine, fantastic.
Stand in front of the cameras, what's a good idea?
Oh, I got it, stop, I did. We need to be at this right here, is that it?
That's her 1,500 one, isn't it?
Yeah, this is this one.
Yeah, we're waiting on that one, but there was a February.
This is a February.
Okay.
And then there's this one.
Which one is it?
Oh, this one, come on. Yes, you spent, we already checked for that on February 24th.
So, that-
We haven't got our money yet on that one, but then there's another one. No, they're cut, is this one, and this one, oh, this one's just May here. You still wrote, these are the Motorola's.
Okay, so-
They're just the two of them, right?
I think there were another one that was in there, but you didn't-
Yeah, this, I've got the two right here.
Seventy-two grand is a lot.
Yeah, 'cause one of them's $5,300, and the other one's $3,000 something.
So, Motorola's, I just, we just didn't check.
Yeah, we just sent down a check, did a May.
So, hopefully we'll get that one.
Yeah, we sent a check back in February, this one on, and I don't know what part we're using, but-
You know, can you people get a 515 number? I'll check that.
The expired notice of issue. Put your rate anything down, or you just wanna come over and get it when you get that one?
I'll just come over and get it, it's private for Motorola.
Okay.
So, that won't be-
Like, that's February 24th, we sent that check. Okay, that it?
Thanks for the move.
Yep.
The only day I'm listening.
Mass fatality operations, just a brief overview.
So, we have, so basically, anything that's considered over three deaths is a mass fatality. But, what we're more concerned by is that we have explosions in refineries, and there's multiple deaths, we gotta have a plan for it. So, the coroner is the one who basically takes care of that plan, he said there was no changes to it, so I just left it the way it was. We don't have a lot of places to put a lot of deceased people, so we would be moving them to other places, we don't have a lot of cooler space, so, unless we could get a reefer truck or something, you know? But, you know, we've, we, I brought a training in, and we did a mass casualty training this last year at the lodge. And we did a mass casualty training this last year at the lodge, and how did it turn out? And-
It had something like that, would that fall on the county too financially for, like, a reefer truck or something, either?
Yeah, well, if I couldn't, so, I have an MOU with every county in the state. So, if another county happened to have one, and I could get one, I would try those routes first. That way, I'm not trying to burden any financial responsibility on the county. Or, if the state could get one, I would try those routes first.
And I would assume that other counties would be more willing to try to assist.
Absolutely, so I'd be trying other counties and putting out that first, and going to the state, saying, "Hey, I need this, so you know, here's the list of stuff I need."
You can't get that kinda stuff immediately, and you, you gotta come to somebody, like, say it's Friday night, and who do you then go to to get authority to spend $10,000?
I'd be coming to the board, I'd have to get permission from the commissioners. There's a financial, come to the clerk and whatever.
So, then, what does that do with transparency, I guess, for the rest of the board? I mean, say it's Friday night, and I can't get a hold of three of you, or the chairman can't get a hold of, I mean, is there something that we have to plan for an emergency situation that we've stated prior that we will assist in some format?
Well, I guess that's what I'm kind of asking.
So, there's a financial section, in a disaster, there's a financial section that's brought in, you can bring in, in the EOC, and they track all the spending and all that kinda stuff.
Who's they?
The financial section of the EOC, so, so if it's marked as a disaster, and then it's tracked for the feds to reimburse and to pay for. So, if it's not a disaster, and the county's spending it, and then it's something the clerk's gonna have to track, and then-
So, I, Mr. Chairman, so I, I think part of where I'm, where I'm trying to track where he's going, is so Friday afternoon, something terrible happens, we're comfortable, I think that discussion needs to happen before this board, but it's comfortable enough that we know, and I'm just gonna throw out a name here, and it doesn't mean absolutely anything, but you have a Cisco truck, that is a refrigerated truck, on standby, that you already have that, that you're not searching as these bodies lay there.
And, you know, I think there's a couple reefer trucks on the west side of town, I think that belong to Wolf's, and hopefully, I think, you know, the refinery has deckers, I mean, there's a couple coolers, hopefully, and so, I mean, we've thought of, of things, hopefully, and-
But I think what his question is, is when the trigger is pulled, pardon the pun, but when the trigger is pulled, that the instantaneous is that phone call is to the chair or to whomever is in that chair.
Whom I can get a hold of.
Who you could get a hold of, that we know, "Oh, that's already been brought up, we know that we have this, there's gonna be $10,000 on the, on the line," we don't know that, we don't, I, I think we need to be in that loop of, of understanding that.
I wonder if there's, there's a mechanism to create a line item, that you-
Exactly.
Put $10,000 into a line item, that touches the chair, then the vice chair, and then follow the line down in order, I guess, maybe, has the authority to declare that disaster and authorize spending out of that fund-
We do have a line item.
-without having to have a vote of the board.
We do have a line item, we're gonna work this out.
Yeah, but I don't feel comfortable authorizing spending out of that line item without-
You'd be in the department, yeah.
Approval of-
So, I think that's where we need to have these little discussions of where we're at with this, and not just have this thrown into our laps and let's all going, burden, you know, during the headlight look. And so, that's what I'm trying to ask for, it's just these overviews of what we're doing here.
Our outage, give us a, so, long-term power outage is really tricky, I mean, you, it's basically a guideline of what we'd want to do, but you can't really, it's kinda hard to detail what you would actually do, because you don't know how long the power outage is gonna be or whatever, so it's kind of a, what you'd wanna do in a long-term power outage. So, I kinda have a basis of how much fuel each gas station has on a given day, which is gonna fluctuate, who has generators, like, what businesses have generators and what businesses don't. So, one of the biggest problems that we have is, a lot of businesses don't have a continuing operations plan. So, like, if a business goes down, or they have a power outage, how are they gonna do, or how are they gonna operate? So, like, our grocery stores or courthouse, courthouse has one.
Yeah, so, we need, yeah.
Like, the city, the city doesn't have one.
They don't.
I've been trying to find to do one since I started, but, like, I don't know if, like, the West County Health Services, I don't know if they have one, if they have a generator, so that helps. So, it's just kind of, we sat down with the power companies, how long would it take for them to restore power? And it varies, you know, on how, how much power is out, stuff like that, it just kinda gave us, I think, a baseline of how we respond and what we respond, fuel tanks, one, one issue is, how are you gonna get the money, you know, first responders getting fuel, so the fuel tanks for the county, the county shops are, would still work, but we'd have to launch that, and those would be run for first responders only, and all that type of stuff, so.
You know, that long-term power outage, that was kinda, this has been several years ago, we was coming back to Colorado, plus, had a major power outage, it was packed full of cars and didn't have enough gas to get from last year, they couldn't pump gas. And so, that is, it's a realistic thing to do, when you think about it.
Yeah, and the state was pushing that hard about three years ago, and some of the, the stuff on the, I can't remember, the little glass things or whatever for the, on the power, they're not even made in the United States, they're made in Germany, and we don't stockpile them in the United States, so trying to get them here is gonna take a while. Fortunately, Wyoming would be, if it's a mass thing and it's United States-wide, Wyoming would be one of the states that tried to bring back up first, which creates its own problem, because what's gonna happen is, you're gonna try to get an influx of people trying to come into Wyoming because we have the power, which is gonna bring people, it's gonna bring crime, it's gonna be people that are gonna kill your cattle, the boom, etc. So, those are things that, you know, we've thought about and discussed, so.
What designates a long-term power outage?
Anything over 72 hours, basically, or, you know, I, I go more than two weeks, you know, you should always have a supply of two weeks, so.
Family reunification, if the, what does this do for the county, the citizens of West County?
You gotta have an meeting place, if you're, we have a disaster, and you are separated from your loved one, we have a plan and place to where we can reunite them. That's basically kinda as far as I wanna go with that one.
There used to be one here for this courthouse too, and there's been a lot of new employees too. Do you think every employee, new employee knows where that came from?
I would hope that the department heads let them know when they start, that plan is, so, the continuing operations plan plus that courthouse safety plan and stuff are all up for update this, this year, so, done. And we'll have a department head meeting, and commissioners wanna join in on that. We can do that, like, over a lunch hour, we did that a few years ago.
Yes, we did.
I think we could do that, I'll pay for the pizza, that'll work?
Okay, so, I guess, some things need cleaned up, a few of these, right, before we probably sign them?
Yeah, we could clean this one out before this, yeah.
I can't.
Just, there's a couple things that just need cleaned up.
Get them done.
Yeah, I'll clean them up, send them back to the backings.
All right. I think that current county one's in that.
I've already cleaned that one up, that was on that shelter plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I did find it in mine, and I got one of these.
Good.
Anybody have any questions, Gilbert, about these?
So, there's plans, we're ready, I share them when I update them with all, all the, like, the fire chiefs, the LEC, public health, sheriff, everybody, if they, if they have people that wanna update them and help me update them, I get some people that wanna help, but usually, it's three of us that go through them, so things do get missed.
I could see that.
But, it's, it's, it's a task, and it took from February till now to get it done, so.
I don't doubt that, I don't agree with you that much.
I don't either.
All right, thanks, Gilbert.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Gilbert.
Thank you.
Emergency preparedness on audio, but Gilbert, I'll listen to it on my drive back at work. Uh, I'm sure-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a discussion at some point, a change in the supervisor of the Homeland Security, from the sheriff to the board of county commissioners. My reason behind that is to have these discussions a little more often than at least once, so, I guess I'll test the waters now, and just, and, and ask to move to have the supervisor's position underneath the commissioners' seat this year. I just think that's a great, I, I think we're struggling with our, our financials, I think we're struggling, and I would just like to see that.
So, in fact, that motion, that discussion, remember years past, he wasn't the, was it Gilbert, it was a different individual, but they ran with the commissioners, and we got a lot better communication, I think.
We got better communication, and I, and I think it's, but who went upon the, upon us to tell the public that what's going on, that this isn't tucked away somewhere, this is, and not gonna be a surprise, that if we put on- that if we put on our agenda, maybe even once every three months or whatever, that we have a discussion of where are we at, those things that we brought up today that we could sign off on, that you, you, you and you are very comfortable if you got a midnight phone call, of, um, I got seventy-two bodies that you want me to give them. I think that's where it's more comfortable.
Yeah, and the, and the motion is that to remove the sheriff of that management position? Is that what the motion is?
Instead of putting it under the supervisory of the commissioners.
And it currently resides under the sheriff. Would there be an issue, Mr. Chair, to have that in addition to the sheriff? Incorporating commissioner man for sure. I'm just looking at it on a, on a constitutional lawful note.
I think you're probably, your biggest issue then is gonna be who do, who do I answer to, I guess. Now, the argument that I see for it is we are the funding mechanism of that, of a lot of that kinda stuff. My biggest concern, I guess, with doing that would probably be the board five, you know, we, sometimes we struggle with other supervisory roles. But if it's a decision that needs to be made, I mean, it, it falls down to the votes, you know, and I don't know why that couldn't be followed, I mean, I know I've heard in the past that it worked pretty good when it was that way. But I don't know that personal experience hasn't been out there since I've been on the board.
Yeah, I just have one comment. Whatever, I just don't know, I don't know the history behind that, why it was moved to under the sheriff, but, um, it might be a good idea to have a conversation with the sheriff to get that ironed out or see, I mean, I, I didn't give you the history, but I think that would be pertinent information to have before making a decision, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, there was quite a discussion when it was, no? It's a six-year.
My only other concern with the motion is are we making a decision on something about a little bit of prior, an opportunity to, for us to reflect on any consequences or without having necessarily that on the agenda, I guess. So that some time could be put in the thought process of, of going down that route. Like I would be more comfortable probably at the next meeting, um, inviting the sheriff and I don't know if Gilbert necessarily needs to be in there, I mean, Gilbert may want this, but that may not be what's best for the county, I don't know, you know, but, uh-
Mr. Chairman, it's a position on a present.
Yeah, right, so, um, that's probably where I would be a little more confident, or more comfortable, um, putting it under new business and testing the waters after the new conversation about it, I guess.
You cannot fix Washington DC from within Washington DC, you have to fix it from the outside, it has to be citizen uprising, and the only way you can do it is through an Article Five convention. There are lots of other ideas that people throw out there that, that aren't in the constitution necessarily. Um, this is a, a peaceful, legal, constitutional method for reigning in the federal government, which, like I said earlier, is the responsibility of the states, that's, that's one of their roles, and they've abdicated that responsibility horribly. Our founders would be appalled that we're thinking of solutions other than an Article Five convention, um, because that's the, the process they put in for this purpose.
Not opposed to the idea at all, but I am, I think some thought should be made, but I, I think the conversation of, of Mr. Colbert would probably make it, too. The other discussion. All those in favor of the motion on the table to put Gilbert's position, the homeland security position, under the supervisory of the board of county commissioners, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm a nay. I would like to have it added to new business.
Gotta take at least two on the agenda, everybody get their heads up on it.
Yep. All right, you gotta get going, yeah?
I know, yeah.
You don't wanna stick around for Trump or Trump.
Oh.
Yep.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye. Bye.
Um, okay. What's that? Yeah, natural resource history, permission to use sidewalk, truck or tree.
So I don't know if you, any of you guys were around for-
Let's say please do.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's really cool.
On a secondary note, they do a truck or tree in up in the elementary, you guys ever done that or-
We haven't yet, but this is the first one we're doing.
Yeah. I'll call Dr. Coberly and see if it's, when they do it down there, I mean, they, it's well attended.
Okay, I think it's the day before the new castle one, so maybe they'll sneak up there if they are hoping to have, is that at the, uh-
They're doing the elementary, yeah, part, they're on, yeah. So, thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Do you need, need a motion for that or anything? Okay, um, and then while I'm here, I was just gonna let you guys know that, uh, we're installing a permanent story walk at the Centennial Park and we finally got the installation done, so we're gonna be doing a grand opening sometime that first week of November. Um, don't have any solid plans at this point, so I'm kinda closing it down, but it'd be awesome if any of you would be able to attend, um, the, uh, September, if you're, or maybe it'll happen.
Just for your, the first of November is what you're saying?
The first week.
First week.
I don't have a, uh, no specific date.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me know.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Title twenty-five. What's going on? I guess I don't know.
Well, Michael was supposed to get the information on what was, um, the contract and what is needed.
You have separate rules out there.
Yeah. Uh, I didn't, I haven't had a chance to get to that, I apologize.
Are you a gentleman?
Yeah.
Who are you?
What's that?
Nathan Todd, nice to meet you. George, you, you have, you're just expressing interest in potentially doing the Title Twenty-five work. Okay, so, can you give us, I guess, a rundown of your, what you got, or, or have you done this kinda stuff before?
Yeah, I have five and a half years prior law enforcement experience, um, just moved up to the area from Utah. When I was a deputy in Nevada, and I was a police officer in Alaska for a short period of time, I was rotationally, uh, no longer doing that work if we're climbing out here. Not for any bad reasons, just had enough with job, I did a, had a lot of incidents and for my mental health, I got out of the, the, of that career, so. But I saw that and, I mean, so that's a legal two thousand in Nevada, I have fun experience transporting people, so I figured I'd put in for it.
Yes, like, the problem we don't have, that we currently have, I guess, is, I don't know what the parameters are for transportation. If you got a, some sort of vehicle that you can transport in with, that keeps you safe and them safe.
Well, that's, I, that's why I, I asked about it, it's kinda, it's weird, usually it's law enforcement that does it, so that's why I wasn't sure how it worked, but I mean, I have a vehicle, I mean, if someone's restrained, like, I'm the problem, I mean, I, I have no idea. I mean, it would make more sense if there was a, like a secure vehicle you could transport, but instead your own personal vehicle, so, um, it's kinda interesting.
Yeah, I understand. And, and honestly, I think for, for us to be honest with you, once you put in for it, we hadn't had a lot of interest in doing it, um, so it, it made us more aware of, we need to build some parameters and some rules and policy of what we would expect of you as far as insurance and all those things.
Yeah.
So that's what we were trying to do for, we, apparently we're unfairly with you involved.
So are they, um, handcuffing these individuals always and and then a private individual currently is hauling them to Casper or Rapid or wherever they end up, right?
And I believe there's circumstance to what we have to have.
A second person.
A second person, yes.
Is there a reason law, global law enforcement doesn't do it?
We, um, probably put it best is lack of, um, deputies. For crime, if we were fully staffed, I think our sheriff's department would be hauling them. What happened was three, four years ago, we had a, no sheriff's department available, so they called Life, or was it Lifeline? We had a twenty-five thousand dollar bill to haul an individual.
We have shortages of the ambulances also.
Yeah.
And a desire in the ambulance. Which is a thought, Mr. Chairman, that we should consider asking to have it.
I kinda put it in front of them at one point, and because they're not fully staffed, that was their concern too, of being able to haul them, but I think what we need to do for you is figure out, I assume somewhere there's some stipulations on, you can't just hand this over to Joe Schmo, an individual that's handcuffed, but they don't take him-
Requirements and gotta think about if there's an attendant medical issue, if the individual, if you're, whoever's doing it is capable of taking care of that. And I think that's one of the sheriff's concerns too, is there's a medical issue tied to it, then, obviously they're not medical professionals, so what do you do with that?
But, and if, if there's not, and there's an individual willing to transfer, opposed to having, if there's two phone calls you can make instead of one, I, especially if, I mean, if there's some competition in there, what the price might be.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you look at the statute, it says law enforcement, so, I mean-
Probably.
If we're not doing that now, I mean, that's another one of those things, is here we sit with a, a statute in front of us and we just kinda do this. No, we do what we do. You know, I, I'm not comfortable with that, I think there should be something out there that states.
So the best thing I think to do is put this on old business and, like, I have an opportunity to review the requirements.
So do we have a timeline on all these, so we keep putting on?
I don't know, but it's- But I'm, I'm, I'm happy that you're interested, that's awesome, I just, we just, I guess, my only concern is are we doing it properly? And what, what requirements you might need.
Well, no, that makes sense, I have a lot of questions myself.
Yeah, I know.
I was also, I worked in a rural area and, you know, like, you do what you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna sit you up for failure.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Because of something we haven't taken care of, so.
And hopefully we're doing everything the way we're doing it now, probably, I, I assume.
Who knows, I think we're making assumptions.
Mr. Chair, I believe there was a comment when we were, we're considering the Title Twenty-five transfers and how Mondel was, uh, willing to offer their services, that almost all or most of them need to go through the mission training or some type of, like our attorney of nation, some type of a medical certificate for that, which the ones, the employees that work up there do possess. So I don't know, probably.
Could be.
Something along those lines, but I, I agree, I'm like, George, thank you for, for putting your name in the hat, but it's, it's obvious we need to get some things figured out on our end first.
Yeah, if you don't mind, you're certainly reached out to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir, appreciate your interest. So, I think the whole business, my eyes are twitching.
Yeah.
Taxual correction.
Are we gonna talk about the auditor?
Yeah, that's what it's gonna do, that underneath business as well. Reset or average. Did you prefer, like, talk about there before, before we do the actual correction?
I thought we moved to have it under old business, it's okay, it's fine.
And maybe we did, I don't mind doing that on the old business, is that what we decided to do? I just wrote it wrong, it's not.
Okay. I mean, it was on others, so I assumed it was, okay. I don't know, which one?
Taxual correction. R early, slightly increase assessed value on applying homeowner exemption instead of decreasing on multiple residence account, which requires manual entry. So they admitted the minus in front of the value, okay. The amount of the negative. I'm confused. It's the back. They're getting it back, okay. Two hundred and- The tax difference or the assessed value? No, the tax difference, two hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Everybody healthy at your house? Keep waiting for kids to drink some water. That time of year.
Please sit down and like. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the petition and, the commissioners' signatures on the petition affidavit for textual collection, affidavit number sixteen ninety-six.
Second? To approve commissioner's signature on factual correction affidavit sixteen ninety-six. All those in favor of the current discussion? Yes, ma'am.
This is gonna be another one of those interesting thing that the legislature threw a cabotion and is causing some issues that necessarily weren't always there, and we will probably see quite a few of these because there's an interesting issue that comes up with mobile homes and, and that type of thing, so, um, be prepared for more.
Yeah. Any other special? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of you on aye, so it's, up here, I'm sure that, here you go. Opposed?
Silence.
All right. Paul, I call Paul. I had a pretty long conversation. Initially, his thoughts went, I'll give you like a roundabout of his thoughts was he, the first thing he said is on allowing them to have a separate line item, separate checking account was, the first thing he said was, this is where I always see we lose money and problems start happening. And then pushed him a little bit on it and said, well, you know, we're doing something with the fare board and we've created a line item for the airport wall. And he said, well, that's probably fine to go that route. Then there's a mechanism for watching those funds and how they're being spent. But then he brought up, and what about the city? Because they have, say, and what happens with these, these monies that the airport has that we now potentially allow them to keep and use pretty much at their own discretion on what repair or maintenance might be? I said, I hadn't really thought about that part, the aspect of we'd almost have to go to the city to say, are you okay with us giving the airport full authority to spend X amount of money on whatever maintenance things are taking place out there? Which threw an interesting curveball at it to me because I don't know that the city's going to be okay with 100% of those funds being spent in a certain format. So then we started discussing a line item for the airport board to have, let's say those funds went into, but you still have that interesting fact of you would have to have the city give the same thing, approval for them to have free run, even if we're okay with it. So I think there's some hurdles there that I don't know. And next year, there's going to be an election, so you're going to have different people on both boards. So I think there's some hurdles there that I don't know. And next year, there's going to be an election, so you're going to have different people on both boards, most likely. But are we going to be in agreement every time of are those funds being used appropriately? So I don't know. He had heartburn over it. And I get it 100%, but also I see where it could be handier for them to use those funds without having to go to two different boards. But that is in all reality, what those boards are designed to do is to watch the taxpayers' money. So I, yeah, I agree.
So I'd rather go back to the fact of in the budget, when we were doing budgets, that it gets put in that how much they make, they put a budget of what they'd like to spend it on, that line item goes in ours, knowing that the city also has a say in it too, but they, but really, I mean, the city gets half, should have half of it too.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, I just think in the budget process, that should be a conversation that they have with both entities and come to an agreement. But as far in, I know it was said in the paper that I kind of agreed with it. I don't agree with it. I think that was probably apparent that I didn't. I just, that was one border removed and it just didn't seem like now we have another board, which, like you said, may have a totally different thought process on it. So I'm not for it.
I could see where you could have during budget discussion time, this is what, if they had a real close idea of what they're, they're gaining every year and we said, okay, we are half of that money. If we're comfortable as this board with half of that money goes into that line item, there's your money to spend on expenditures. Yeah. However, you're probably going to, if you spent all that funds, we're out of luck, you know, when it comes, if the city decides to say no on X, Y, or Z, then maybe you're going to end up spending more out of the county side than what you are on the city side.
Although I, maybe, Mr. Chairman, that's what you say is if you spend it all here and then you wiped out that line item, you're going to have to go to the other end. We're done. Line item's done. There won't be no budget adjustments. That's part of your budget process.
Yeah. Yeah, I kind of wish the airport board was here to have this conversation with them. I don't, I don't want to hamstring anybody and I understand going in front of boards can be tiresome. I mean, we got to fix a door, you know, now we got to wait two weeks to get approval to fix a door, to lock it or something. But I don't know. And I know you're in a situation where you probably don't want to make much comment on this. I don't know here. I would love to hear your thoughts though.
My thoughts are, being as you talked to Paul, I'm just going to try to keep it very basic as far as non-involvement on, heavily on that side. But my question would be, has in discussion with Paul and affiliations with other airports in the state, do they, are we the only municipal airport that is shared by the county and the city structured our way? Or is the odds, so we would definitely know the structure of other airports and just that amazing put in matter?
That's a phone call I'd be willing to make again. I did not ask you that. I assume, you know, I don't know, he does X amount of counties in the state. Do they have an animal similar to what we're dealing with? I'm going to guess probably no. They're mostly either probably.
County or municipal?
County or municipal. So, but I will, I have no issue with it. And I don't mind you calling me, Jared, as you would probably, and I know you have to kind of be an arm's length on this, but you might have better questions for Paul than I would have known that route.
Might be able to bring some information to the board though, even if I.
Yeah.
Recuse from voting or something like that. If I've got some facts that are brought to my attention, I could share with everyone.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to you reaching out though. He just cautioned, he said, you know, this is where I generally see problems financially is when you start breaking them off and it's hard for him to watch that kind of stuff. But.
I was thinking on the same lines of view is if they kept track of how much they were bringing in and then at budget time, we allow that much to go back into their budget for those repairs, so they wouldn't have to keep asking us about it. And like you said, Paul, while knowing that that's our part of it and if they use it all, they've used it and they'll have to talk to the city about the other part. To me, it might make it cleaner at this point, do not have the extra account, not have an extra line, do not do all that complicated. And I think the way they're going and the way it sounds, that they'll be tracking things pretty carefully because they're excited about the income they're going to be bringing in, so. And maybe that's an incentive for them to bring in money, that they're going to get it back.
The only other concern I would have, and I'm not saying that the city would do this, but those monies aren't necessarily designated to have to be used for maintenance. That's a, they say, well, the city's got this little slush fund, or the county has this little slush fund. Let's let them spend that first and leftovers that we have, but it could be dumped into our general fund at some juncture, you know, which.
Mr. Chairman, you could.
Anybody.
You could have another board do the same thing. So you could have a board that came through here, wholesale change and say, that's our, that's going back into the general fund you guys spent on your own. But I think part of the budget process, as you say, this is what's anticipated revenue. We ask everybody else, what's anticipated revenue? What's your anticipated expenditures? And we divide them in half and say, you know, we can't, we're not micromanaging the city. City's going to do what the city's going to do. We're going to give you X amount of dollars, put your voucher in this. And if you feel justified, you're going to understand, you're going to get paid half. Or if you pay full and you don't go and ask for them for the other half, pay some rosser off.
It could lessen their issue with having to go to two separate boards. If they've got the funding sitting there from the one board already, then all they have to do is attend the city meeting and say, we have the funding from the county. Will you fund the other half of that aspect? It might be an easier avenue than having to wait for approval from two boards. And I think that's a good conversation to have when we do our budget this upcoming year.
Or, Mr. Chairman, if you feel you need to fix the door and it has to be done now, you know, you have the funds, go get the door fixed and talk about it later.
Yeah.
I don't know. But I, I don't like the separate checking.
Yeah, I think that's all its biggest concern is going that route leads to less transparency of the mechanism. But I think you should, you got to reach out to them and you would probably have better questions to ask than maybe I can conjure up when I'm working with them.
I would like that. And one other thing, I just wanted to, out of talking with some of the other board members, I don't know if the main focus was in addition to adding a checkbook to the airport. I believe it was for an account or a line item for that.
So we might be on the right track.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think the hang up was them retaining their own checkbook.
Good, okay. Anything else on that? Sorry. Been a couple of weeks since I've talked. Public comment? We're a little bit ahead of schedule. Sorry. I was going to do that, I'm not sure, but. I can do it now. New business. Michael and I visited briefly yesterday. Painted Hills Road, I think we've found all the easements and it's the same thing as Hart Road, right? Similar, we need, there was potentially never a resolution.
It's similar in that I believe we can do a resolution just to get it established officially as public road. The mechanism to get there is a little different, but as far as a resolution, we can do that. So I've talked with Jim Hansen on it a few times. From what we've gathered from the property records, I think we can get that established by resolution soon. I'll be at the next meeting.
Is Painted Hills Road the one that turns into whatever road?
Kenwood Drive? And it's labeled road?
We're probably never going to fix that problem, right? Because people have their addresses and they should be very upset.
Yep. They already went through that and it was a nightmare. Nobody wanted to change their address. I don't blame them.
That's all, I didn't have anything else on that. I know Jim's been working on that with you, so.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I think that's where your problem's going to lie, is it's named one thing, we've been calling it another thing. If we have to go through the process of changing the name and then establishing it, we may have to do that. I think that should be looked into.
Yeah, there's old reservations on that that we looked at. And it's broken up into I believe three different roads on it. It's Fairgrounds Road, Kenwood Drive, and Painted Hills.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But they've been labeled differently, you know, it's just, it's been convoluted, it's been weird. So, and that whole thing of naming it one name did not go over at all. So I just think there's an interesting thing that you might have to look into that we're establishing something that's not called that. See what I mean?
I got you.
So if it just takes a public hearing to say, hey, we are going to put it in your name, but it was called this, so now we're doing this? See what I mean?
That's a possibility for us to name it all the same.
Or way, or back, or however.
However, it doesn't mess with people's addresses.
No, we can't mess with their addresses.
No, we don't want to do that. Really, I just think, I think put those resolutions in place, we can get it done.
Painted Hills Road, also known as Fairgrounds Road, also known as Kenwood Drive.
Right. And see, there, you know, there's on the Kenwood Drive, you know, the south side of that is public land. And so, I mean, make sure you establish that you have that easement. You should have many of them from Forest Service and the BLM, but I'd make sure that you have that MOU in place.
Public comment? Is there any public comments? Mr. Streeter?
Just got. Work for one's notes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the course of meeting, I reached out to Uptown EMS supervisor Tiffany about the potentiality of using Uptown EMS for Title 25. She's at work, so I haven't got a response yet, but we have kind of bolstered our EMS force and we're a week or two away from all of them graduating as advanced EMTs as well. So I mean, I think the potential of Uptown contributing to that is possible. I mean, I'll let you know when I get a response from Tiffany, but it might be worth coming to a town council meeting to ask, now that our EMS has kind of had a resurgence.
When is your next meeting?
We just got, last week was our October ones and next will be second Tuesday in November. Actually, it got changed to a Monday because of scheduling conflicts.
For second Monday?
Second Monday in November. I believe it's the 10th.
Yeah, I reached out to her husband and his, that was his concern, was just having staffing whenever needed and maybe you can't make one or two, but you can make.
But as an option.
Yeah. Thanks, Nick.
You guys.
Appreciate that. Any other public comment?
And just to add to that, I mean, being the EMS district now, I mean, our comment was in a couple of those meetings is to have an ambulance ready regardless of who the group is. And so that's something we need to think about too, is having that be upgraded.
Speaking of the EMS district, I have one complaint for the board.
Okay, let's re-advertise that.
I, it's been advertised.
In the paper?
There we can put it. Might as well.
Well, we'll put that offer out too, that we still need board member.
Any other public comment? Commissioner comment? Where do you go?
Um, when I pulled in here the other day, I just want to put it on the radar about sealing the parking lot. We're getting some nasty cracks again and I don't want to sneak it back to the pothole hotel that it was last time. So just a heads up of maybe just put that on somewhere when we're budgeting or whatever.
Who's the company that did that last? Forget it. Four years ago or so, three years ago?
Brandon was in charge of that.
So we also had some, some non-compliance districts and I just wondered, did they all step up to the plate or should we have a comment of that there are five districts that are not in compliance?
Oh, given with the Department of Audit, they're missing one or two reports and they have not, all advanced non-home report, if you need to send a letter to them.
Okay, that was my other thing about maybe yours, to the point of sending a letter. So, and the victim's report, are we putting that on the next one? You got it? Yay!
I got it. I'm down the hill and got it.
Yay! Thank you.
Maybe you can keep it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Those are mine.
I don't, I don't have anything.
Sorry, I was reading.
In lieu of the homeland security request earlier, I was thankful that Gilbert did tactfully touch on a lot of information. I actually learned quite a bit just from almost not having any this morning. So I was thankful for, for Gilbert and and him touching the areas that were that were appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reflection. I don't have anything that I can think of, so. I need your